Vice Mayor Anderson.
Present.
Commissioner Butler.
Present.
Mr. Lucas.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson is absent tonight, and Mayor Rainey.
Present. We are now called to order. Commissioner Lucas, will you let us in the prayer and pledge, please?
If you please stand. High your heads. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening, God. We ask that you be with us tonight as we make decisions for the betterment of our community, God. We thank you for each person that's represented in this building tonight, God. Be with those in our community that are sick and they're dealing with situations, God. We ask that you be with us tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Item four, approval of agenda and executive session.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler. Mayor Rainey. I'm so sorry.
I'm so sorry. You've done.
I'm sorry.
I've done it again. Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do I need to vote again? So are we going to adjourn now to executive session?
Good.
Okay. So we will be back. We have an executive, short executive session, and then we will return and continue the meeting. Okay. Item five, public hearings. There being none. Item six, citizen comments.
None tonight.
Item seven, public announcements, awards, and recognitions. Presentation of the financial audit for the fiscal year.
Yes, Mayor. Our auditors are here tonight to present to you the audit for the fiscal year that ended June 30, 2021. I've sent you copies of that. It was the draft copy. I provided for you tonight a paper copy that you have in front of you. And our auditors here tonight to present this to you. So Nicole.
Hi, my name is Nicole Sikachi. I am a manager at Blankenship CPA Group, and I'm here to present the audit. I have a couple of things that I'm going to go over that might look different from last year or just kind of notes that we had during the audit. And then I could take any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
So this audit is for the year ended June 30, 2021. I think the most important page is the auditor's, independent auditor's report. And you guys had an unqualified opinion on that, which is the best opinion. No issues were noted that we needed to make note of in the auditor's opinion this year. Let's see. There is the management's discussion and analysis, which just kind of goes over the financial health of the organization. And there are some additional tables in there. And then, starting on page 11, are the basic financial statements, starting with the statement of net position. This is the government-wide statement, so this is not on the fund level. This is a full accrual, which means things like fixed assets and debt is included in the statement. A couple of things of note is that your cash position and your overall current ratio is healthy. Your cash went up this year. So you guys have more assets. You have enough assets to cover your liabilities. Additionally, on this statement, you'll see that it, comparing it to last year, it looks like your total capital assets decreased. They did not. That is just a function of an adjustment that we made during the year that you'll see on the next page, the statement of activities, which is the, I guess, the income statement of the government. This is where it lays out by your specific departments, any expenses, as well as your revenue. And then your general revenues, which include your property taxes, and then your state shared revenue as well. You'll note a prior period adjustment there. And that was just a change in the way that management assessed the capital assets and the depreciation applied to those. It doesn't change the actual dollar value or the cost of those assets. And that didn't, apologies, that did not, was not an error that regard, was any internal control issue. It was just an overall change in estimate regarding that depreciation. The next statement is the actual fund statement. So this is kind of how you do your, this is how you would see in a budget. And how you would look at that way. You will see a change here. The general fund looks a little bit more, it looks like it has more activity this year than it would have last year. And that's just because the facilities funds from last year was absorbed into the general fund. It would have originally sat in the non-major government fund section. Overall, your total liabilities, deferred inflows, resources, and fund balance increased from the prior year. That includes your cash increasing, as well as a little bit of a decrease in your liabilities. And then you guys do have your stabilization fund there, and that's also committed and is fully funded. The next statement that I do want to go over is looking at your revenues and your expenditures. Those were healthy this year. We didn't have any issues during the audit and any of how that was recorded. Are there any questions so far on these basic statements? If I need to slow down as well, I can. Overall, everything looked good on a financial aspect, looking at this. Debt looked healthy. You had enough to cover your debt service during the year. And then you, and your overall net position is positive and increased from prior year. Additionally, in the financial statements, you'll see the budget actual reports. And we didn't note any issues there where any expenses were over the budgeted amounts during the year. And then the back of the financial statement. So then you have the notes to the financial statements, just kind of a little bit more detail, some tables of your current debt, your capital assets, a summary of what's happening in your pension fund, as well as your OPEB fund. And then some additional language that describes that adjustment that we made is in note 10. And then note 10, your subsequent events were that there was a bond issuance in, I believe this was in October. So you'll see an increase in your debt on that overall net position next year. That will include that debt. Some statements in the back of the financial statements that I like to point out is on page 49 is your schedule of debt service requirements and general obligation debt. That gives you a good summary of your total requirement year over year for your debt service and what you'll need to have to make those payments. And then again, those additional bonds will be included in the statement next year. And then on the next page, page 50, I like to point out the schedule as well. It's a schedule of expenditure of federal awards and state financial assistance. This is a summary of all the grants that you've received during the year, as well as there's a listing here for any equipment that you've received that's considered federal equipment. This year, it's a little bit higher due to CARES Act funding from, at the federal level, as well as that governor's local support grant that occurred during the year. And then the final thing that I like to point out is that we have two opinions in this report. One is the independent auditor's report over the financial statements, and one is on compliance with government auditing standards. And this opinion was also unmodified. And we had no issues with compliance or the management's internal controls over that compliance. And overall, the audit went well. It was our first year doing the audit, which is always exciting to come into a new city so that we can find. But it was a great experience, and we had a good time working with Scott and Tom. Were there any questions?
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Do you have a comment?
No, we just very much appreciate you. You guys hear me say this every year, but I love an audit, and I'm not kidding about that. I absolutely do. We learn a lot every year about things we need to change. We, we use our audit not only as a financial reporting issue, but a management tool as well. We believe there's room to, to improve every year. One of the big things that Nicole noticed this year that we did go back and change on the net position as far as the infrastructure that she mentioned. I believe it was in 1986, the city adopted a policy to where some of your in-the-ground infrastructure, water, sewer, roads, that sort of thing, carried a 60-year depreciation schedule, and that was year over year. So they depreciated roads and infrastructure for 60 years in 1986. They depreciated those same roads and infrastructures the next year, in 1987, for another 60 years. Obviously, they don't last forever. So we went back and adjusted our depreciation schedule for, or how we consider those, for the lifespan of those, to go back, make those a little more realistic. When you compress those numbers, it hits your asset. It appears that there's been a change of that, when in reality, you're still on the same asset. You're still on the same infrastructure. We've just brought that into a useful life depreciation. So rather than it be 60 years every year, you'll go back and adjust that number, beginning with 30 or 25, depending on the asset. And then you would break that down every year until such time as it exhausts that life. So that's where we got to the main number.
Yes, and we do recommend doing that. We have a couple of other cities. We also audit quite a few utility systems, including gas and water, where we encourage that, look at the depreciation, appreciable life of the system, as well as the, the value of that system. So it's not unusual that we see adjustments like these, since it is encouraged to kind of make those evaluations year over year.
It helps us budgeting also when you go back and you figure out, not only for resurfacing, because let's be honest, you could, you could, you could figure that asset to last 30 years. It could last five years. It could last 35 years. But when you go back and look at that, at least on the books, those numbers are accurate. And we can go back and, and determine from a long-term planning consideration, realistically, how long are these roads going to last and when do we need to make those improvements? Not only for the roads, but the water, sewer, infrastructure under them. As Nicole and I talked about, years ago, you'd use ductal iron or some other material, plastic pipe for water, sewer, those sorts of things. Those materials, at the time, carried a lengthy service life, 50 or 60 years, but that's not realistic. So when you go back in, if you have to repair that line, or whatever that item is, you have to make a repair to the road as well. So one piece of that infrastructure can affect the useful life of another. We want to make sure we get those in accordance with each other. So that's how that number changed. But our, our overall position is really unchanged. It's a, it's a paper number, but it is not a budgetary concern as far as your cash position, so.
All right. Well, you're welcome if any other questions come up. I'm always available during the year, and I look forward to working with you guys next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Sure, thank you.
Accept the, so do I hear a motion that we accept the audit presentation?
Mayor, so, so Jill, no, that item is 11B. So if you want to go ahead and consider item 11B, we could.
Why don't we go ahead and consider item 11B?
Motion to approve 11B.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to accept the audit presentation. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 7B, city events.
Good evening. Just want to recap on holiday wonders. We had approximately 2,700 vehicles that went through the event. We served over 350 gallons of hot chocolate and went through 3,000 candy canes. So we, we seen a lot of people for the event. It was, it was a positive event. We had people come to the event as far away as Lawrenceburg, Fort Campbell, Kentucky. But we thank everyone that came out for the event. Keith, can you go to the next slide, please? This year, we're going to be having an Easter egg hunt here at City Hall on Saturday, April the 9th, starting at 10:00 a.m. The event's going to last until 2:00 p.m., but the Easter egg hunt's going to start right at 10:00 a.m. The Easter Bunny's going to be here along with multiple food trucks as well, right here at City Hall.
Thank you, sir. And everyone that I heard and talked to enjoyed the light show. I enjoyed it. It was fun. I enjoyed seeing Santa Claus. So that was good, too. Police report. Mr. Collins, are you going to do that?
Yes, Mayor. Members of the commission, the police report for January, and I'll, I will go through. The first page you see includes some comparison for staffing, overtime, and training hours from November 21, November 2021 until December 2021. Our staffing remain level at 23. Our overtime hours, due to some city functions and other operational concerns, went up from 14.5 hours to 34 hours, but that's not alarming to us. We have an overtime budget that, that covers that. And then our training hours in December was 241, which was up from the training hours of 196 in November. In November, we had self-initiated calls of 665. In December, that increased to 816. You may recall that we had some discussions a couple of months ago with Chief Humphries about being understaffed. We were just down a few positions, and that brought down some of our activities. We were back up to full staffing, although some of those officers in training. But we are able to utilize those and be a little more proactive with some of our enforcement, and that's the increase on that number. The next page, our monthly comparison. Total arrests for the month of November, 57. The month of December, 53. One domestic arrest in December. No DUIs in November or December. Drug charges, 15, up four from the previous month. Theft, theft cases total of four, up two from the previous month. Citations, as we mentioned just a moment ago, November 30, December 21. Traffic accidents, we were at 23 for the month of December. Property damage only, we're 18. Five were injury traffic accidents and no fatalities for both months, which is obviously good news. So that's a brief report from the police department. I'd be glad to answer any questions if, if I can regarding the police report.
Are there any questions? I'm assuming you're doing the fire report also?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
For the fire department, for the month of November, I'm sorry, November 2021. It's actually late with November. We have December information on here. I apologize for that. You'll notice on the far right-hand side that December 2020, we were at 106 calls, emergency response calls for the fire department. In December of 2021, we were at 88. Oddly enough, December was the lowest monthly calls for the entire calendar year of 2021. We'll, we'll look back and see what that is, but December was exceptionally low for month for us. And you can see from last year, that's not typically the case. So in December, we were at 88 emergency response calls versus 106 last year. So we'll do some work on that. But it's good news anytime your, your calls for service, particularly emergency response calls, are down. So we're not upset about that number. That's good news for us. We'll just kind of do a investigative, investigation on that and see if we can't replicate that in the future, if those are things we can control. The next page, some basic information. We had 10 overlapping incidents. Overlapping incidents are when we're on one call for service and we have another call for service. Two automatic or mutual aid calls to surrounding fire departments outside the city limits. As you're aware, we are part, we are a part of the Williamson County Fire System. That's why when you, you see we have one fire station, you would think our truck would be Fire Engine 1, or Fire Rescue 1, or Fire Ladder 1. We are Unit 31 marked on all of our trucks, because we are Station 31 in the Williamson County system. So rather than be our own Unit 1, we're 31. That's how we arrive at those outside service agency agreements and dispatches. Our dispatch time to arrival was 5 minutes and 14 seconds on average. Our average operating time on scene was 15 minutes and 35 seconds. That's a good number for us. If your average is 15 minutes, that means you're not spending too very long on any individual call, which means our calls are relatively not as serious as they could be. So the shortened time you have on scene, that's a better, better news for your community and a better number. 17 interactions at two events for public education and outreach. And again, as we remind everyone each month, if you have a request for smoke detectors or smoke alarms in your home, you can call the direct line of the fire department, 615-799-3473. We also, as we do every month, remind everyone, if you have a 911 emergency, please dial 911. If you Google or pull up on Maps, the Fairview Fire Department or Police Department, the number that comes up is the local number. We encourage everyone, if it's an emergency call, to dial 911 and not those direct numbers to the, to the offices. The next page simply reflects our December call breakdown. No substantial change. 81% of our calls are a rescue and emergency. The other, the others, less than 20% of our calls are other, other non-serious calls that we have within the, within the city. The next page, we have the, what we call the heat map. Everything in red indicates areas of the most calls. Clearly, the Highway 100 area that you see is the darkest red in the lower center of the page. That's 100 around, between Walmart and Booby Lake. The next area of call volume is out at 40 and Highway 96, out near the truck stop area. So those, those have been pretty consistent over the last couple of years. There's been no change in that. We expect that every month. We don't expect that to change any, anytime soon. It simply does highlight the need for future consideration of a fire station on the Highway 96 corridor. And as you're aware, we're working to acquire property for that, for that site. The next page, just a series of photos from the, from the fire department for some activity they've had over the month. And then the next page, you'll have some 2020 versus 2021 call type comparisons. This is, this is for your information, just to read over, but we're, we're satisfied with the numbers. I will tell you that our average response time for the year was 5 minutes and 43 seconds, and we're down from an average response time in, in 2020, which was 7 minutes and 22 seconds. That obviously has to do with staffing, the utilization of some of our staff, but that's a minute and 40-second reduction in response time year over year, which is super, super good news for us and obviously positive for the community. The next page, you have the total 2020 calendar year call breakdown versus the 2021 call breakdown. Those are nearly identical. Those have been consistent across the board, and we understand that. We're, we're still at the 80% or so for the rescue and medical response calls, and we don't see that changing anytime soon for us. That's just the calls that, that we have. And then the next and final pa, or the, the next page is your December training hours. And the final page are your total training hours for calendar year 2021. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have that, that I can answer on those. If I cannot answer that question, I will certainly get that information back to you. But that's our Police Department and Fire Department reports for December of 2021.
Mr. Collins, what is a good intent call?
A good intent call would be a call where we're seeking to service someone, a fire, a smoke alarm, would be a good intent call. Anytime we get a call for service, we, we qualify that call, because that's an out-of-service call for us.
Okay.
So you have to identify what that is, and a good intent call would be just that. A service call where there's no threat or other, other concern, other than just that standard service.
Thank you. Any other questions about the fire report? Okay. City managers report?
Yes, Mayor. I have four items for you tonight, just briefly. We have one vacancy on the Planning Commission. Ms. Qualls has resigned from the Planning Commission. So I will be getting the current applications we have to you for consideration. Obviously, we'll need to fill that slot, but her resignation was effective immediately. She was a pretty valuable to the member of the Planning Commission, not that they all are, but certainly her individual expertise, real estate-wise, has helped us. We're going to miss her on the commission, but obviously that, that commission takes a good bit of time. We look forward to getting that replaced and certainly hope that she'll consider serving on the Planning Commission in the future, if she has the ability to do so. We have two vacancies on the border zoning adjustment. We'll be bringing that to you as well. The borders, or border zoning appeals, I'm sorry. The border zoning appeals meets infrequently, typically once a year or so. But when we need them to meet, we need to have those members available. We have three members currently. We'll obviously need to grow that to five, and we'll get that information to you as well. My preference would be that we're able to select BOZA members from the number of applications we have for the Planning Commission, because they've all expressed service in that area in some way. So we'll look over those, see what information we have, and get that to you. But it would be nice to be able to have the Planning Commission and BOZA field within the next 30 days or so to make sure those, those committees, missions are fully staffed. Our zoning, you, you guys attended the work session with the Planning Commission to finalize some of the language on our residential zoning. Our goal is to have that first, for a first read to you at the first meeting in February. The second reading would be at the first reading in March. And then instantly, or immediately following that, present to you the land use map for overlay and approval, so we can get that work done. So we're to the end of that. Again, commercial work's been done. Residential is substantially finished, which is great news for us as we transition in the summer. We know we're busy. We know there's development. We look forward to getting that work done. And lastly, the amended budget. We, as you're aware, we amend our budget once a year. We have made some changes to some of this budget through the year. Obviously, we have to include the receipt of funds to the bond issue. We have to include the receipt of funds for the federal stimulus dollars. Obviously, those monies are in the bank, but we have to show what those are. We'll also put together what we call a budget by fund for those dollars, so we'll know substantially what those dollars will be allocated to over the course of the next 36 months. But that work is substantially done. We have that information as well. Our goal is to, my goal is to have that to you by the second meeting in February, which will cover us for the rest of the year. And it will also include the city's new amended compensation plan. That will be funded there. As you're aware, we, we've prepped really over the last 18 months to fund that compensation plan. We know that it's needed. We have ample resources to, to complete that. Our initial goal was that we'd have the compensation plan effective July 1 of this year. However, as all of you are aware, particularly as it relates to public safety, the ability to attract and retain police and fire physicians and others, we, we face the same hurdles every other community does. So my plan is to have the compensation plan fully installed and complete, seeing the benefits to the employees with our first payroll in April. That will put us about 90 days ahead of schedule, but certainly get us well ahead of the, the fiscal year that will begin July 1. So there's a lot happening behind the scenes. That's an important one for us. That's been a couple of years in the making. But we know that, that that will be a huge benefit to our community. We look forward to getting that done. So when you see the amended budget, know that that will be included in that, in that budget. Our previous compensation plan provides for amendments to that compensation plan, so we don't have to go back and vote for amendments to the pay plan. That was done when we adopted that by resolution a couple of years ago. We do, however, have to fund it, and that's what the amended budget will include. With that, I'll be glad, glad to answer any questions you have on those. But that's where we are, just generally across the city.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item nine, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Item ten, old business. There is none. New business, item A. So from the executive session, we have a resolution to bring forward tonight. Vice Mayor, if you would read the resolution, please.
Resolution zero one dash twenty-two. A resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners, accepting the city's audit.
No, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry. That's, yeah.
That's B that we've done away with. Do you have this resolution in your hand?
It's right here.
Twenty, twenty-nine? Yes. Do you want to read the resolution?
Yes. So is, what letter is it?
A. Eleven A. It says executive session.
Okay, from the executive session.
From the executive session. We now have a resolution.
Okay, this is the resolution from the executive session. Okay. Item A. Resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, Board of Commissioners, confirming the receipt of the stormwater calculations for map zero four three, parcel zero zero six point zero zero and zero two six point zero zero, in satisfaction of the City of Fairview ordinance 2020 dash twenty-nine.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Motion passes. Item eleven B, we have already done. That was the acceptance of the audit presentation. We're now eleven C, first reading of ordinance twenty-two dash zero one. Vice Mayor?
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning eleven point zero eight acres of property consisting of Williamson County map, tax map zero one eight, parcel zero two nine point zero one, located on Highway 96 North, from CG Commercial General to RM twenty, multifamily residential. Property owner, Horizon Property Partnership, Agent T Squared Engineering Incorporated.
Is there someone here to speak on that?
My name is Louis Loyn, and I'm with T Square Engineering. We're just requesting to get rezoned to the RM twenty. This parcel is actually part of the interchange business in the Fairview Ford, which allows for a multifamily, and just requesting to rezone that. There is the pond in the middle, and we are aware of that, and we are going to buffer that and comply with all of the TDEC regulations surrounding that.
Okay. Are there questions from the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Item eleven D, Vice Mayor?
First reading of ordinance 2022 dash zero two. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning twenty acres of property consisting of Williamson County tax map zero two one, parcel zero six three point zero zero, located on Northwest Highway from RS forty, low-density, single-family residential, to R twenty residential. Owner, Northwest Cove LLC, Agent T Squared Engineering Incorporated.
I bet that's you again, isn't it?
Me again. Again, Louis Loyn with T Square Engineering. We are requesting the rezoning, just to match the property next door that has recently been rezoned to R twenty also, and just be consistent zoning to the parcel.
For approval?
Are there any other questions?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Eleven E. Vice Mayor, if you'll read the resolution?
Resolution zero two dash twenty-two. A resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, to name the Williamson County trustee as the property tax collector for the City of Fairview and to authorize the city manager to enter into an interlocal agreement with Williamson County for the collection of property taxes.
Is there a motion? Go ahead.
Mr. Collins, if you could just break it down a little bit more. That resolution wasn't in here until tonight, and so I did not have a chance to digest or completely understand what it was, but some of the new notes tonight, if you could just break that down for us.
Yes, and I apologize for that.
Should we do the motion the second, then have the discussion, or have the discussion first?
I can explain this.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Butler, members of the commission. Williamson County trustee, by state statute, any municipality or the county trustee in any county is required to be the trustee or collect sales taxes on behalf of any city in the state that requests or the county to do so or names the county as the trustee for that. Currently, the City of Fairview is the only city in Williamson County who does not use the county trustee for the collection of its property taxes. The reason that that was done, and looking back, there's some validity to this. This was discussed, from what I can tell, seven or eight years ago. The dilemma at the time was that the city was in such a cash crunch that it really couldn't delay the receipt of some of its property taxes. We receive property taxes about four months through the year. And if the county does this, there's going to be about a forty-five day delay between the time the county receives the funds and the city receives the funds. You may recall that at the time, six, seven, eight years ago, the city had its school facilities fund. And what was happening was during the lean times of the year, July, August, September, October, the city was transferring those school facilities funds into its operating account, living through the lean months off of the school facilities fund, and then taking the property tax as soon as the property tax started coming in, and repaying the school facilities fund. The school facilities fund no longer exists, and that action really wasn't proper. The school facilities fund was considered, for audit purposes, a part of the general fund, but it wasn't. It was a liability on the city's books. It wasn't disposable or transferable cash. With that, the collection of property taxes, the reason that other municipalities do it is because of the sheer time and effort it takes on staff for the distribution of documents, collection of property taxes, and the management of that. For about five months out of the year, property taxes are more than a full-time job. We will allocate, over a four-month period, two and a half people to man a window to collect, record property taxes. It is just an unmanageable task for us for the size that we have. So understanding that the county will provide that service for us, understanding that we're almost to the point of having to add a staff member to do that for that part of the year, it just doesn't make sense for us to do, and we're the only agency in the county that doesn't do that. I have talked with Williamson County. They're kind of excited about it because it makes their job easier as well. For them, that puts them in constant communication with the city as far as sending out notices, collection of funds, all of those things. So it streamlines the county's effort, and it streamlines our effort. So there's really a no lose for us. The only thing that prevented us from doing it in the past was simply our cash flow model rather than the financial ability to do it. So I hope that answers your questions, sir.
Yes, sir.
I presume that people can still drop their taxes off here?
Everything will be done through Williamson County.
Okay.
That would be the purpose of this, as is every other city in Williamson County. Every other city and us, if this passes, will coordinate their property taxes through the Williamson County trustee.
Okay.
So is there not a bank or something that will accept, like they do county taxes?
No, ma'am. This...
So everyone has to drive to Franklin?
I'm not saying they have to drive to Franklin. I'm saying they would remit their property taxes to Williamson County trustee.
I guess they could mail it in?
However, they would pay it, yes.
And I'm assuming we can still pay it online?
Yeah, online.
Yes.
Pay it online or?
Bail it?
If you trust that.
If you choose to do so.
Or the only municipality that does not utilize this tool. And Williamson County has to take it because Tennessee code says they would if we wanted it.
If we request it, they can't deny it.
But they are willing and able and...
Yes, sir. They're really...
They prepare Williamson County tax, we prepare the city tax. They go out separate. Where now, they would kind of do it in unison on a single property probably and send it out separate.
Yes, sir. That's correct. They're excited for it because that helps them. We're duplicating so much effort in the property tax process that there's no winner in it for us. And certainly for us, it's just, it's nearly, I mean, it's a big task, certainly.
So do we have to pay them to do this?
Williamson County has, by state law, there is a small percentage of that that comes in. It's just their operational cost. They would simply, their cost assessed to this would be what their cost is. So it's minimal. It's around one percent or a little less than the total.
So if property taxes are two million, it'd be one percent of the two million, which would be two thousand?
Vice Mayor, I'd be glad to get you the specific number. I don't have that specific number there. There's a calculation form they can use. I can tell you that we're to the point, we're going to have to hire someone, so...
Who's doing the job now?
All of admin. It's a, Randy does it, Richard does it, Tom does it. It's a constant turning of the door for four months, and we just can't. When Randy gets, I don't know how many dozen records request a month. Tom's doing financials every minute of the day. We're going through the process of just administration of it, and it's just an overwhelming task for us. So if this doesn't, if we can't do this, then when we do property taxes in the fall, I'll hire someone likely part-time for five months, or full-time if I can get them for five months to have someone to do this, because it's just a huge task for us. We're just a small office.
And I'm presuming that you've done the calculation, so no matter the percentage, it's still cheaper than paying the man-hours we're paying now, city staff?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
One question. Should we ever want to, the board, ten years down the road, whatever, ever want to get back to doing it at City Hall? Are we able to?
You could unname the trustee and unwind the agreement. It would have to be for the subsequent, we are in a subsequent year, not the tax year that you're in.
Understood.
Any other discussion? Now, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Resolution passes.
And Mayor, just a quick thank you for that. I cannot stress enough that this is a big undertaking for us. And that one resolution offers such a relief to the taxpayer and to the staff. I don't know many resolutions we could bring that would be that simple, that has that much of a literal overnight positive impact for all involved. So thank you for that.
You're welcome, and I feel the need to explain my hesitation. You know the population I work with, and so there's always that concern about what will that do for the elderly who like to come here and pay their taxes? So that was my only hesitation there.
I would agree with that concern if they weren't having to deal with the county on theirs anyway. I think if it was totally separate than there, but given the fact that they're still dealing with the county trustee for their county portion of the property taxes, then we're simply a duplication of efforts. It doesn't make sense for that person as well.
That's why I quit fretting about it when I finally realized they're having to pay their county taxes anyway.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Item F, resolution zero three dash twenty-two. Vice Mayor?
A resolution requesting the Fairview, the Fairview, Tennessee election for city judge with concurrent general sessions jurisdiction for criminal offenses and municipal court clerk be held in conjunction with the August 4th, 2022 Williamson County, Tennessee, general election.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion?
Are we moving this date, or just break down for me exactly what? There's the August 4th, the date, and now it's going to fall in line with the...
County elections.
Commissioners and Mayor, what we're doing is simply including our general sessions court, our general sessions judge and court clerk on the overall broader Williamson County election ballot.
Right now, they're separate on their own, not a...
They would be the, they typically fall on this ballot, but we have to pass a resolution requesting that it would be included on the ballot each election year. So we'll do the same for the municipal elections. Once we get to the municipal election, we'll go back and we'll offer the same resolution or question that our municipal elections be held on the same as other state and federal elections, but we're required to adopt the resolution naming the date.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Item G, appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Do we have an applicant?
No, Mayor. That was really informational when I went over the information. Our fear was that we did not have a quorum. We have a matter that needs to come before the Board of Zoning Appeals. Mayor, recall, we appointed someone last year, but due to miscommunication with that person, I thought they had determined that they were not going to continue to serve. We rectified that today. They are going to continue to serve. We can schedule a meeting. That said, we will be two seats short. We have three oh five, and that's when I'll present you the applications for Planning Commission in hopes that we can fill BOZA members from those applications.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
And so we'll post the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals out for applications or whatever?
I'll submit to all of you the applications we have currently.
Okay. Or can we maybe run it again? The last one was, what was it, four or five months ago or something?
It was. We'll get all those to, you guys let you look over those. If there's a suggestion that we go back and do that, we certainly will follow up. We need to get them filled, but make sure that we kind of do it as expeditiously as we can. So yes, if that's required, absolutely, we'll do so. No question.
So no action needed on that one?
No, sir.
Item twelve, Commissioner Butler?
Nothing further tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lucas?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I would just like to say, welcome to Waffle House. I've heard that fifty million times over the last few months. When are they going to open? So yay, they're open. I happened to be out at 3:00 AM this morning and just curious, you know, to see if they were open. And, I mean, I wasn't out because of that, but I just was out, so I went over to see if they were open. And a really nice little fella was, he saw me pass by, and he's waving at the window, "We're open." And he wanted me to come in, but I was not going to, I just was out to pick up something at the shop. So I wasn't going to go in and eat, but I was curious if it was going to be a 24-hour thing, and it appears to be, which is kind of cool, you know, but anyway, so that's awesome. And I did want to say, there's a lot of new people in our community, and they're so appreciative of how nice everybody is here. So they, you know, I always have people come in, and they're shipping back home to their families and stuff, and they've always told me how, you know, nice everyone is here. So let's just really welcome them, because I think that's awesome that they've chosen our community from far-off as California, Florida, and I'm like, why Fairview? But, you know, we're very attractive to a lot of people. So that's really nice that, you know, they feel that way and they want to be here. And just on another note, we have a lot of awesome healthcare, you know, people here. as far as doctors, dentists, chiropractors, eye doctors, and we have some great ones here. So if you are needing one, just look in your own community and, you know, keep your business here instead of having to drive to Nashville, because I think if you look at the ones we have here, and what they have to offer, it's, you know, second to none. I've just been so thrilled with the, you know, the vast area of medical we have here. And just as always, let's help keep our community beautiful, and just pick up trash and don't throw it out. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have nothing tonight, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And we're adjourned.